On this episode of NorCal News Now, we're speaking with Butte County District Two Supervisor Candidate, Deborah Lucero. I'm your co-host, Mike Richmond.
And I'm your co-host, Aaron Har.
Aaron, I was gonna ask you how you're doing, but I have the idea that's not a good thing to ask you.
Maybe not today. I mean, I dressed up, Mike, a little fashion sense from the Midwest. It's a Midwestern fashion staple is the thick white T-shirt under the collared shirt. So just giving you some advice there, man.
And those of us who are listening or watching don't know the aroma of Marlboro and Aqua Velva. It's very impressive.
It's a staple, yes.
It's a statement, definitely that. All right, well, let's turn to the good stuff here, Aaron. As much as we like to talk about your fashion sense, our guest on today's show is a well-known community leader with deep experience in community media, arts, culture, heritage, tourism, and agriculture. She currently manages two art agencies and two public access TV stations here in Chico and Redding. Now she's running for a Butte County Supervisor seat. Deborah Lucero, welcome to NorCal News Now.
Thank you for having me. I'm really excited to be here.
We are excited to have you. Thank you very much for joining us today. Well, let's get into it because on this show, you know, we, of course, we tried to ask the important questions, the big picture policy issues, and I know a lot of our listeners want to know about that stuff. But we also try to kind of get past that a little bit with our guests also. So maybe we can start a little curveball. So you're a famous friend of the arts.
Yes.
What would you say is your favorite work of art?
Well, that constantly changes because art is constantly changing. And as much as I like all the classics and as much art as I'm fortunate enough to experience, since we have a changing gallery up in Redding, seven shows a year. My favorite current piece is one that I saw in Minneapolis. Right as you get off their wonderful mass transit system, right into the heart of their cultural district, there's this old, it's kind of an old area, you know, that used to be where they traded meat. And they, you know, so they have all this huge timber and all of these really beautiful old buildings. And there are two buildings that are about six stories tall, and they have this huge mural of one of our favorite guys. Do you know who I'm gonna say?
Prince.
Oh, no, it's not a prince. No, no. Yeah, that would have been a good guess. And actually there, that would have worked really, really well. But he was inspired by Woody Guthrie, and he was one of those guys that went down in time. Times, they are changing. Bob Dylan.
Robert Zimmerman.
Yes.
That's right.
That's right.
That's right.
So yeah, that's his real name, you know, but we all know him by Bob Dylan. And he, it says, "Times They Are Changing," and it shows this beautiful, very colorful mural of him as a young man and him as an older man. And then, "Times They Are Changing." And I think that it really sums it up. It's one of those things that no matter what decade we're in or what timeframe we're in, it's always changing. And I guess we always think that we are really it while we're here on planet Earth, and that times, they're changing the most rapidly for us. But I think with technology and everything that's happening right now, we are in some really wild times.
All right, so Deborah, let's get into it. Let's get into the meat of this a little bit. One of the reactions to the 2016 election is a lot more women. Certainly, we've seen that have decided to run for office, one office or another. In one sense, that's really hopeful for democracy, but at the same time, we know that partisanship, personal attacks on and offline are at a very high level right now. So what does it feel like for you as a woman, of course, to be stepping into what's kind of a combative and partisan and maybe even harsh environment?
You know, it's interesting because it is different to become a candidate. That has really changed my whole world in the past few months. But I'm a pretty competitive person. I was, I was, you know, into sports my whole life, and I'm competitive. And when you are an advocate for the arts north of Sacramento, you're used to fighting for every scrap, every piece, every bit of anything that you can get, and being told, "No, sorry, that's not happening because, you know, Aunt Millie needs oxygen, and so-and-so needs this and whatever." So I think I'm well-prepared because I'm ready to fight for what we need. And we need politicians who are willing to fight. And willing, and when I mean fight, I don't mean fight like we see on Need I Name Them, CNN, Fox News, all of these. Not that, talking over each other, nothing like that. What I want to see is coming together based on facts, based on research, based on reports. What, where can we come together and agree? What on here do you agree with? What don't you agree with? Let's work on it. We can make something happen. And really, that's what those students were trying to do today. It's like, we need to make something happen. And I'm not willing to let another generation go by without making something happen in this county. Something good for this county. We need it. I don't want to see poverty go up two or three more points. We're at 20%. That's ridiculous. It's, we can't, we just can't do this anymore. So I'm ready, and I want more women to come right behind me or in front of me because we need more women, you know? We represent less than 25% of all offices held at the county and state level and federal level. You know, that's crazy. We're 50% of the population.
More, yeah.
51.
Yeah.
So I'm ready. I'm ready. I'm excited. That part excites me probably more than anything else because I think that will bring, women will bring a different way of thinking if they're true to who they are, you know, in terms of being feminine and in terms of really harnessing that energy and putting it out there. I think we can do some powerful things.
But I mean, making deals too. I mean, sometimes you need to be able to conciliate and make some deals too.
I want to make deals. I want to make deals. I want to make deals that are good for our community that would make a difference.
You played a big part in changing the Redding area to the, getting a cultural designation for arts, the Redding Cultural District.
Yes.
I think that's got to play a big part in building the tax base and bringing, you know, the tourism dollars that you need, that fourth layer of revenue in.
It already is. We garnered a $242,000 grant. The McConnell Foundation, which is one of the largest foundations in the North State, has committed 10 years to the downtown.
How awesome are they? They're so awesome.
And, you know, it was based on that designation because they knew that if the state got behind, and there were only 14 of these designations in the entire state of California, and Redding is one of them. But Redding is building a world-class city. You know, people down here in Chico are like, "Oh, poor Redding." Well, poor Redding, they have the Sundial Bridge, they have botanical gardens, they've got Turtle Bay, they have the first four-star hotel north of Sacramento. I mean, they have some very rich and beautiful things. And Chico has some very rich and beautiful things. So it's like, why can't we be doing this?
Yeah, but Redding's really invested, really, Redding's really invested in that, in those dollars to bring that tourism in, to build that infrastructure, to bring those people in.
They are, yeah.
Yeah, and voting to increase tax, you know, they're...
Well, they're putting it on the ballot. I mean, they are gonna put a sales tax on the ballot. And they've tried it before, and it failed. And I think that here in the North State, you know, I would be in favor of a sales tax increase. I think that what people fear is that where is it gonna go? Is it gonna just go into the black hole that where everything stays the same and nothing changes?
It's gonna go to public safety.
Well, supposedly, but again, you know, when we talk about public safety, we can't just keep, you know, arresting people. Our jails are overflowing. There has to be different changes, and it has to start earlier than when we meet the person in the street. And a lot of that goes back to our schools, and it goes back to our communities, and it goes back to being a larger community, a more caring community. And you create those things by becoming involved, you know?
Well, Mike, I was really excited. Deborah was one of the first women out running for a seat, and a real local icon. So I was real thankful to see someone like that, you know, step up and run. And she's running for county supervisor, and you know, you ask a lot of people, "Who's your county supervisor?" They don't quite know.
Yep.
And then they don't quite know that it's broken down into districts to where, you know, you're actually voting for the supervisor in your district to be part of that body. But, you know, let's, I guess we could just tell our viewers, you know, what are some of the things that a county supervisor does?
Well, I think you hit it right on the head that most people don't have a clue what county supervisors do. And I think it's kind of amazing, and maybe I've taken it for granted all these years because I've worked alongside the county for almost 20 years. But they're in charge of a half a billion-dollar budget, a little over half a billions. It's about $528 million. And just to put it in perspective, I think the city of Chico's budget is 110, something like that. So basically, it affects every one of our lives, all their decisions, whether it's, I think they should be actually front and center on the homeless issue. 51% of that budget of the 528 million goes to mental health, behavioral health, also Department of Employment Services and public health. So when you look at just the priorities, if you just wanted to set priorities by budget, that would be a priority, just the health sector and employment services. And as we know, the people that are homeless on the streets, and particularly in downtown Chico, that we see people, we get to know them by name, a lot of them, we know who they are, who they say they are, and a lot of them have mental issues. And I think one of the things that really got me thinking about running was working up in Shasta County and seeing how they were approaching their budget, their issues, and all of the agencies that service the homeless population, whether it's nonprofit agencies or agencies within the county or possibly city services. So I started looking at what they were doing and thinking, hmm, why couldn't we do something like that here in Chico? They got all the agencies around one table, you know, 24, 26 agencies, talking about where are the gaps? What about that kid that came into the Salvation Army who's 15 years old, who has never spent a night out on the street? How are we going to save that kid from even one night out on the street? Just because he made a choice and his parents said, "Get out."
Do you think that the average voter, the average constituent really understands, for instance, with their taxes, that what is city money versus what is county money? I mean, do they understand how supervisor versus, say, the Chico City Council in this city operate in terms of affecting their lives?
No, I don't, I don't think that the average person understands that. I think more importantly, what I really see happening is we are always in a squabble over our dollars. And instead of looking at things as, "How can we solve an issue? How can we become solution-based governance? How can we do that versus, well, that's the county's issue or that's the city's issue? We need to be more collaborative. We need to bring more state and federal dollars into this city. We need to have better transportation. We need more housing." You know, I was thinking about the housing issue, and I've been reading about it. And it was really interesting to me that after the 50s, you know, we kind of went into this suburban kind of way of life. And before that, there used to be boarding homes, boarding houses where you could rent a room. Not everybody wants to be responsible for an entire apartment. They just want a room. They're gonna go find a place to eat. We don't have boarding houses anymore. We don't have facilities like that for people that may not want to participate in life like we think people should participate. They need a home. They need an apartment. They need this. They need that. But we don't have the type of housing anymore that allows for that. So as our city centers, as people started moving out and became more suburban, and our urban areas lost some of that infill housing, if you will, the rooms, the boarding houses, the old hotels that got torn down for big, tall, high rises. Or in our instance here, we just didn't build that way. In Chico, we just don't have that kind of building, and in most rural areas, that's the issue as well. So when you're faced in a, you know, tremendously populated area like San Francisco or LA, and you want to get out of those kind of places, coming north looks good. But yet, we can't say that all those people are from somewhere else because we know they aren't. A lot of them are right, from right here.
Yeah, we really gotta educate ourselves on it more because the county gets the continuum of care money.
Yes.
So to get, in order to get that continuum of care money, you have to go care for people. You have to show that you're using that money and caring for people. And that in turn gets more grant money, gets more money going and secures the funding. But and the biggest, the biggest issue, I guess, for the county right now is the staffing. It's the public safety, which takes the most part of the budget, and...
Fire and sheriffs. And fire, you know, I mean, look at, look at what we're facing, you know, with climate change. I just listened to an excellent series on PBS, and they were talking about the recent fires in Sonoma and Napa, and how 44 people lost their lives. And it came down to a breakdown between two counties who had different names for dialing, if you reverse dial, you know, and try to evacuate people. There was a different name for it in Napa County than in Sonoma County. So when the operators were talking to one another, they didn't even know what, what they were trying to do. And I thought, wow, that's just such a simple thing. But after I heard it, I thought, it really lines up with what I've been feeling and what I've been working on the last seven years of my career. And that's really collaboration with surrounding counties. We can no longer go at this on our own. You know, we are too small. And, and, you know, the state sets it up in some ways that we are all pitted against one another. But we need to join together, and it's not enough to just have a rural caucus that represents Imperial Valley and then also represents Butte County. We need to really come together up here and get a coalition of counties and find out what our significant issues are, which I think fire safety, police safety, the sheriffs, and cannabis is also a huge issue. It's chaos. It's chaos. We need to be smarter.
She's saying we have to collaborate a little more with county to county. And that's sort of what the new groundwater legislation that's coming, the Sustainability Groundwater Management Act, STIGMA, that's kind of what they're proposing too, right? Is we now have to create an agency in the county, and then that agency has to create a plan and bring it to the county supervisors, and it's got to collaborate with other counties in order to make...
Because water doesn't know when it crosses over the county line.
Right, and we don't want to pit ourselves against it that way. So yeah, we're kind of being forced to collaborate at a state level too, so.
Well, I think, I think hopefully, you know, the powers that be are beginning to see that while we need local jurisdiction, and while I completely and totally believe in that, we also need to be more important to Sacramento. And when you have the coalition that I started for arts and culture up in these parts called the True North Arts and Culture Alliance, it's six counties. It's Butte, Tahima, Shasta, Trinity, Siskiyou, and Modoc. And that represents more than 18,000 square miles, which is larger than nine US states, but we have less than 500,000 people. So when you're trying to be important to a state government and a government that is the seventh-largest economy in the world, that's not easy with 500,000 people.
Yeah, our county actually runs in the negative, right? So we, we actually get more money from the state than we create from the state, for the state. So, I mean, I guess that's a question I have too. Should counties like us who are in the net negative, should, should we get a rule that says we can kind of keep that money? We, maybe we know how to spend it better? I mean...
You know, I can only speak to the areas that I really know well. And I can tell you that it's difficult for the state, the size of California, to understand each one of its members. Because each member has different qualities and different assets that it's working with. And some are very fortunate, and some are not so fortunate. We're very fortunate in Butte that we have water. That's a huge asset that we have that the rest of the state needs. We're also fortunate that we have a university here. We're, we are also fortunate to have such a beautiful community like Chico and Paradise and Gridley and Oroville. I love Oroville, you know? But again, when you're down at the state level and when you're talking to state people, they don't even know how to pronounce Butte. It's "but," you know? And when you know you're having problems pronouncing the name of your county, you can kind of figure that there's not a whole lot of knowledge that goes with that as well. And these people are all making decisions on behalf of all of us. So we have to have a louder voice, and I believe that the supervisor position is not being utilized to the fullest extent that it could be. It could be a voice. And when I was a kid, I knew my supervisor. Maybe I was a weird kid, but you know, I probably was. But it was in Tahima County, and I knew the supervisors because they were important to us.
Well, that's, that's a good segue, actually, because, you know, the incumbent in this race, Larry Wall, Supervisor Al Wall, he's a fiscal conservative. I mean, he talks about this a lot. He's opposed to raising taxes. He wants the county to live within its means, and he wants to focus on job creation. So why are those bad things? Or are they bad things?
I don't think any one of those things is bad. I think the approach that Larry has taken for the last 20 years has not resulted in a lot of good creative solutions. I think that taking on their own, any one of those, job creation, who's gonna argue with that? And who wouldn't argue with somebody living within their means, you know? I think we've learned that it doesn't bode well when we don't. If we did that as individuals, it doesn't work. If we do it as a business, it's not gonna work. Ultimately, it's not gonna work. So how do you solve fiscal issues when there's not a lot of ways for a county to bring in revenue? And we're limited there. One of the things I would like to see, and I don't know that much of this has been done, is I would like to audit some of the departments to understand how they're spending money, what, how many people are being serviced for those funds. And I realize audits take time, and I realize that they can be expensive. But what I'm concerned about is doing things the same way all, you know, every year and saying, "Well, we don't have enough money for this. We don't have enough money for that." Yet I see the Department of Employment Services is moving out to the North Valley Plaza Mall. That's gonna cost for, well, they're, they're saying about $350,000, which we all know how construction goes. It'll probably be closer to $500,000 at the end of the day. Where did they get the extra money to do something like that? And as a result of that, who isn't being helped in their department? Now, maybe that's, you know, these are just things I'm, I'm curious about. I'm not saying there's any ill propriety or anything like that, but I like to look at those things. And since I've been attending meetings, I always have a zillion questions, but I never really am asking those questions because I don't want to seem combative to the incumbents or disrespectful, you know, because, because obviously, they've been dealing with a lot of these issues a lot longer than I have. So I do know, though, that when I get in, I want to hit the ground running, and I would like answers on, well, how does that work?
Well, I mean, there's, you know, there's fiscal responsibility. There's also, you know, sucking the, the financial oxygen out of the room. You need to spend money, invest in people, invest in things like job creation.
Yes.
So there's a fine line there between, you know, spending enough to keep the county doing what it needs to do, supporting people, and also creating jobs and the like, and also not overspending.
Yes.
So how do you walk that fine line?
Well, I, again, I think in, you know, my parents were both teachers. They both belonged to the Teachers Union. We grew up, I mean, in the day, my, my, I remember not having a lot of money because my parents were teachers. And they chose to be teachers because they had good healthcare, and they had good benefits, and they had great time off. And that was the trade-off for not receiving a lot of money. Now it seems that it's both, you know? We, because when you have the average median income in Butte County being $38,000, and you have management people making $150,000 or $120,000, and then the new hires are coming in at lesser, how do we even out that, you know, those pay scales? Because if 10 people retire and we're funding them at 90% of their income, and that's a million dollars a year just for 10 people, is that sustainable? I, these are huge issues. I mean, everybody's talking about the pension issues and all of that. I don't know yet. I know, I'm looking at it. I went to a workshop on it. I was very astonished at, you know, in three years, we will be in the red in Butte County. And it's primarily because of what we will have to put in to the pensions, which is not funded and not anywhere near funded. So how are we going to deal with these issues? And we can't continue to do what we're doing. It's not working. So these are hard decisions. They're very difficult.
Increasing the tax base is always what, I mean, you know, when you're looking at expansion, that's kind of the idea is, you know, I mean, that's the Republican idea right now at a federal level is you expand the revenues through, you know, cutting taxes, and hopefully the growth will then fund more revenue. It doesn't always work out that way.
And, you know, you can start to see an example of that, that theory and the fact that you get a little ticked down in unemployment. But the poverty rate goes way up because guess what? Those aren't good-paying jobs. Those are part-time jobs. Those are in, you know, you know, I've been on ZipRecruiter here lately, okay? There's not any, unless there's something open at the university, unless there's something open at the school, or, or the college, or local government, or whatever, there's not a lot of good jobs out there. And, you know, bringing the current supervisors who passed on a, on a new industry, on a, on a new industry could have created new small business, that could have created opportunities here that the voters in this county overwhelmingly voted for. And then to, you know, on the back end to say that they're for job creation, bringing revenue building to tax base. I mean, I'm not too up on whether those would have been great, great-paying jobs, but, you know, the poverty rate has gone up, you know,
Tremendously.
To 20 points. So now we're at a situation where we're in a really unique situation. And I don't envy Deborah, you know, for, for the role she's taken because that situation, somebody's gonna have to get in there and really work at it because it's not gonna get better overnight, so.
It's not, but we have to start doing something because we are losing our, our infrastructure, you know, because we, we don't have enough money to, I mean, this is a simple thing, but how many have nearly lost a tire on a pothole? Or if you ride a bicycle around Butte County, be careful.
Yeah. Well, driving is the most dangerous, you know, fatal thing you could do here. You know, you have, you have a better chance to do that than, than flying. So there's, yeah, there's, there's some scary public safety issues that lie ahead if we, if we don't correct the situation.
And I'm not a big believer, you know, I've been listening to a lot of people, you know, saying, "Well, we just need more police, and we need more fire, and we need more of this, and we need more of that." And the truth is, number one, we can't pay for more. We don't have the funds to pay for more. So we have to look at this situation differently. It's not, we cannot use the same tools we have in the past. And that's why I think we need to be collaborative with counties because they're all experiencing the same thing. We're all in the same boat.
Well, let me throw you another curveball.
All right.
If you don't mind. You know, I think that we always assume that people that we vote for are fully formed and, and are not gonna change. Well, we all change. We all change all the time, right? So what's something that you've kind of done a 180 in your adult life on? Something that you, maybe even just a year or two or more ago, not even that many years ago, that you've really changed your perspective on? And how did that come about?
Well, I think the biggest one would be, and this was when I was much younger. I was probably 30, and, and I was not sure about what it meant to be a homosexual, and if that was right, because I was raised in the Catholic Church. And I worked with a Christian women's group, and there was a lot of negativity around that, but I just knew that it could not be right. And it always rubbed me wrong. And then my sister came out, and she came out first to me and to, because she felt I was safe to come out too. And that changed my life. It changed my perspective. It changed, you know, I was able to peer into her life and to see what she had to do just simply to, to love someone that, that she wanted to love. And I realized that this goes beyond politics and that politics should have nothing to do with it, that our individual choices like that should never be on the table. And that was a big, that was a big 180.
I mean, I, what you're saying is so interesting. I mean, you know, you have this idea that, that some sea change, but people are people, right?
Right.
They're living their lives. I mean, it's like, you know, people are encouraged now to say, "Well, when did you know you were straight?"
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, right.
It's like, "When did you decide to come out as straight?" Right? It's like, you think about it, you're like...
And my sister says things like that to me, you know? It was, I mean, we had a great conversation. I was probably a little younger than that because she was, she was, I'm six years, no, I was about 30. I was 30. I never came out against gay marriage or anything like that. I wasn't, I didn't feel that strong, but inside, I just didn't know if it was... I wasn't, I didn't feel that strong, but inside I just didn't know if it was right. And, and then having her talk to me, I was just like, it completely changed my whole horizon. And I raised my children that way.
What you, the, the position you're running for, this seat is a nonpartisan seat. But I mean, there certainly, I mean, I don't think any of us these days in this political environment don't kind of think of ourselves on one or the other teams. And certainly when I think about conservative conservatism and I think about Christianity, I know those two things are generally very intricately linked. You know, many times, you know, churchgoing is one of the things that most closely correlated with people who voted for Donald Trump. You know, if you're a churchgoer, you're much more likely to vote for Donald Trump than if you weren't.
Blows my mind.
But it's very interesting and that's why I kind of wanted to explore that with you. So what's your perspective on Catholicism, Christianity? And, and how those overlay some political belief systems too?
Well, I'll tell you what, I really think that, you know, they should not have anything to do with personal lives. Governance is one thing, you know, church should be completely separate. Your belief system should be separate from governance. I, I, maybe I'm almost libertarian on that.
Checks and balances.
And I just don't believe,
That's in the constitution, yeah.
I don't believe that, that they should be linked at all. And I believe our founding fathers thought that as well. Now, some people will pull out different quotes and different things from different founding fathers, which I'm sure if there were some founding mothers, and I'm sure there were, they wouldn't want their sons and daughters fighting over those things or killing one another over those things or causing that kind of havoc. So I think those need to be completely separated. And in my mind, they are. They can, they can inform your decisions, you know, they can inform who you are as a person. They can help you morally be maybe more upright. But if that were true and we know that Trump got a lot of that, then what about what's up with Stormy? And what's up with, you know, all this other stuff? I don't know, you know, for, for, for that group to stay behind him in light of all of these things that have come out, we've had presidents get impeached for far less.
Yeah, and we, it's a big day. You went, you went down to the plaza today for the, the student walkout, which has kind of taken a conversation away from DACA and, and some other things. And so has other misgivings of our, of our administration, of our current administration. But, you know, Trump was in, Trump is in California right now picking out wallpaper for his, or I'm sorry, walls, not wallpaper.
Much more serious.
Maybe.
And, and yeah, I guess, I guess, let's talk about Laura's Law a little bit.
Yeah, that's a good one because, you know,
Because your opponent has had a 180 as well.
Yeah, over the course of time. I mean, Laura's Law is a, is a law here in California, which, which essentially, and I'm, I'm very much short cutting this, but essentially deals with people that are mentally ill, that, that are having issues. And it stemmed from an incident where a woman by the name of Laura was, was shot and killed by a mentally ill man. And it really has to do with, as I understand it, you know, how we get those people services, how we are able to provide services and, and also at the same time, protect the rest of the populace from people that may be a danger to others or to themselves. So 18 counties, I just actually was researching this, have implemented Laura's Law, but Butte isn't one of them. Now Larry Wall in 2016 said he was open to it and recently he kind of turned around on that and said he wasn't. I think fiscally was the reason. So why is Butte not looking more favorably towards Laura's Law? And, and how can, if there's a funding issue involved, how can the funding be provided? Because it would seem to be a public safety issue in a certain sense here.
Well, if, if his reasoning is fiscal, I mean, what they are saying at the county level is, well, we're going to have to take monies away from some other program to make sure that this program goes into place. But, but it's very difficult to get this program into place, even though it's been around since 2002. You have to go through the court system to get somebody who's over 18 to basically be court ordered into mental health care. That means that these people have either been hospitalized once or twice in the past three years. There's a lot of regulations about it or jailed or they are harmed to themselves. And my understanding, and I just read a wonderful opinion piece in the Sacramento Bee by a YOLO supervisor who was, wasn't sure if he liked the impinging on freedom of the individual. Like what if somebody just went and said, you're crazy and got you into some program? Or, you know, that was his concern and, and, and he wrote about that in Sacramento Bee. And he said, after years of implementation now in YOLO, they have found that there's been a 50% reduction in the number of calls and people being jailed for having mental health issues as well as hospitalization. And there's been an overall savings. So in my mind, what I hear from local government many, many times is they make these decisions. And what I would like to know is how they make those decisions? Are they making them because they've audited their department? And they know that everything they're doing is working fabulously? And so they don't need to make any adjustments? Or the number of people that they're helping would be detoured if they implemented this program? I'm curious how decisions are made because I, I think that they need to be more thoughtful. I'd like to see more figures, you know? And I realize everything you ask for requires staff time. But if 51% of a $528 billion budget is spent on health, mental health, public health, public assistance and Department of Employment Services, I darn well want to know, that seems to me, it's 51% of that budget, then we should know how those funds are being spent.
Say that again. So, so more than half a billion dollars in this county.
Yes.
So 260 million bucks or so is allocated towards these very issues.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know that people appreciate,
That's a big number.
That's a huge number.
It's a big number.
For a fairly little county.
Yes, it is.
And, and so the idea is, as you say, if we can audit this and begin to understand and get our arms around this a little bit better and see what the, the efficacy of it may be.
Right.
Just purely fiscally. I mean, you know, putting aside, you can't ever, or don't want to, but even putting aside the benefits for individuals or those that may be at risk for, in the general community.
And see where the holes are. I mean, what I'm hearing, and this again, I'm basing on my attendance at, at this round table in Shasta. You know, many times what's happening is we have a lack of certain types, types of health workers. So we don't have social workers who can evaluate the person to get them into this program, which could benefit them, but by the time they find the help, then that person's already down the road or who knows what might happen. I just believe we can be more effective than we are. You know, I mean, sitting around that table, I was thinking of, of a nap. You know, if all of these people had nap and that 15-year-old kid went into the Salvation Army and they knew he was going to spend the night on the streets that night, couldn't, without violating his, his privacy, couldn't there have been an alert sent to have someone come and get him and take him to a shelter where he would be safe for that night? Because Salvation Army couldn't take him because he was underage or whatever the case might have been? You know, there, I mean, there's all these little caveats, you know? And so when you're really trying to help people in these situations, it's difficult. The people that are trying to help them are guided by certain principles, certain laws, there are certain things. So it's, it's not easy, you know?
Going, going back to Laura's Law real quick, I feel like this really sets up a situation where the county deals with the problem before, or the courts, before the police actually have to. Like, but really, I would think that this goes well to help keep police safer and, and not, and ultimately not have the police have to discharge or, or, you know, something, something along those lines of, in dealing with, with someone having a mental health crisis. So I, I just kind of, it just kind of struck me about what the taxpayer costs are in that, you know? When, when, when we're leaving it up to our police to deal with this from not having a proactive measure put in place that could ultimately save a life and save some taxpayer dollars. So, I don't know.
And they are, you know, they are putting together this roaming healthcare.
The social worker that goes along with the police. That's a great idea.
And I think that's a good start, you know? However, if what they have been saying is true, where 5% of the population is causing, I forget if it's 85%, excuse me, or 90% of the problems. You know, if you begin to look at that, you know, statistic, it's like, we can identify those people. We know who those people are. If we had Laura's Law, we could, we could enforce that. You know, we could possibly get somebody off the street that is going to be a repeat offender. We now have some way of doing that. Right now, we just have a voluntary 72-hour hold, you know, or something like that. And this would actually give us tools. And I think we need that tool.
Yeah. And, and the issue of homelessness, I mean, we, we've examined it, Aaron, on, on the show. And we're going to be examining it more, more closely going forward because it's a, it's a key issue, I think, that affects so many other issues.
Yeah.
One part of it that I think I've always thought about is that, you know, we all have compassion for people that are, are, find themselves in, in a homeless situation. As you say, there are, there are neighbors, they, many people who have homeless, who are homeless have grown up here. There, there are Chico and Butte County residents, lifelong residents. But there's also a tension there. I mean, there, there certainly are members of the business community that would prefer that the, that our, our downtown park doesn't have homeless in it.
I would prefer that.
Sure. And, and there's, there's a, there's almost an anger, there's a frustration. Frustration, I think is probably the better word for balancing those things. I mean, people say, well, you know, people, you know, have their bodily functions because we have bathroom issues too, where people can use, use restrooms. And they're saying, well, what are we going to do about this? We just have to get these people out of here. And there's an aggression there and there's a, there's a tension there. So how do we balance those things against one another? I mean, we want to be compassionate for the homeless. We want to also respect the business community as well and their, their desires.
I think we have to use intelligent compassion. I mean, you know, we are, we have, our studios are right across the street from the downtown plaza. And both of our entryways are homeless shelters in the winter. And what we, how we have worked with the homeless population is we made a deal with them. It's basically, you know, at nine o'clock, we need you to clear out of here because we are going to open the doors. And, you know, if your stuff is here, it's going to go away. So you need, and we usually give them a day or two or a warning because sometimes it's new people that are coming through. But like, you know, when it's raining, we want them to be able to be undercover. I don't want them to be out in the rain. I don't want to see their stuff ruined either. So it's tough as a business person, you know, we just got tagged with graffiti on our building. Is that frustrating? Yes. Is it costly? Yes. We are not the only city dealing with this. But, but as a society, what we're dealing with is the breakdown of our mental health situation and our mental health abilities. Just like the rally I was at today. When I asked the students, I said, when there is an event like this, when there's a school shooting, do you have an assembly? Is there an assembly where you all come together and you're able to ask questions or talk or, you know? They don't do that. And there's, I think this statistic is one nurse for every 1,500 students, something like that in this county. When I was a kid, my nurse, I remember her. If I had a headache, I would go down to the nurse. She would put a cold compress on my head and make me feel like she was my surrogate mom because my mom wasn't there and I would feel better.
Oh, yeah.
And what do we give our kids today? What, what are we doing to our youth? You know, we're going to arm, you know, our, our resource officers? We're going to give them guns? When they really need more books, they need more nurses in the school, they need more teachers, they need more art, they need more drama, they need things that kids can latch on to and participate in and feel safe. And if these kids are walking around with these thoughts in their head, we're not doing something right. We're failing. We're failing them.
I was getting crackers every day at the nurses' house.
Hey, yeah. Hey, I put my head on the furnace, you know, and then go in.
So like getting back to the tax base, I, I'm a, I'm a park worker. So let's go, I'll, I'll do a 180-degree confessional today too.
Oh, alright.
As a park worker 15 years ago, started having impact, having homelessness and people experiencing homelessness impact my job a lot more than I was normally used to. To the point that it was affecting the demand for, you know, what work I was supposed to be doing. And ultimately, you know, the taxpayer was burdened but because percentage of my time was going into that. And I'll tell you, 15 years later, there has been really no solutions. The solution to, to the balance you talk about is to do nothing. And let's let it fall onto the park workers of California to ultimately deal with this problem, you know? And it doesn't just go to there. The, every public safety, as we talked about it, firefighters deal with it, police deal with it, you know? And public safety all around, any, anybody in public service has to have a percentage of their time now. And it's a huge burden to the taxpayer, what they're finding in the, in the studies. That also means it's just cheaper to house them. So I have come around on this issue to find out that when we arm our park rangers, when we do these things, when we create, you know, it's a slippery slope, you know? If we, we put guns in schools and we're going to have guns in the parks, we're going to have guns in movie theaters, we're going to have guns in the churches, we're going to create a prison anywhere you go and guns in the mall. So at, at what point do we just say, okay, we're just going to accept that this is the, the world, the reality we live in now? Or, you know, I think what these children are saying, they're drawing a line and saying, no, this is absolutely, we're not going to accept this.
And I, I'm grateful for that. You know, I'm grateful for them standing up and, and saying that to us because we need to hear it. I wasn't in favor of arming the park rangers.
And I, I don't want to relate the two. I don't, I don't know why I am. But I, I guess it is relatable in the fact that the more I've seen homelessness criminalized in my job in the 15 years, the more I've seen retaliation and etiquette go to the wayside. In fact, it's, it's, it's common to actually have that sort of retaliation. In certain areas where you have a different sense, a different, you know, if, if, if you have the right sense about it and you say, hi, Michael, you actually get to know their name. You actually get to know their person. You, the maze, the reaction they get that that's the most positive thing they heard all day.
Or you look at them or you ask them how they're doing or, yeah.
And the next thing you know, they're, they're creating a, a positive thing by going and picking up trash or taking away. And should, should we have those sort of programs to where they actually are doing stuff? And, you know, should we, should we ultimately focus on the etiquette and the trash and the cleanup? And, and the services that, that they need to provide? Because I think when, I'm telling you now, I know this from experience, the more we criminalize it, the worse and the more desperate they will get and the more, well, the more chances they will take. And I think that's why we're seeing these petty crime, these burglaries going up is because they don't feel a sense that the community is behind them at all.
I agree. I agree.
I agree too. I, I, you know, it, it's something that I've thought about a lot because my father was a teacher, as I said, but his real passion was to be a fireman. But he had diabetes. He had, he was Hispanic Native American, got early onset diabetes when he was very young. So he could, he was actually, they discovered it when he was in the service. And he always wanted to be a fireman. So in Corning, where I grew up, we had a volunteer fire department. And so he was able to fulfill that desire by becoming, you know, a very integral part of the Corning Volunteer Fire Department. He would, you know, he loved doing the volunteer work. He loved going every Wednesday night and playing poker with all the guys. They loved to go burn down old buildings, you know, their motto was, let's save the lot. You know, that's just a joke, but anyway. But I don't see the ability of people today to plug in as much in a volunteer capacity as there used to be because we've professionalized our community so much that I feel that we've pushed away perhaps the people that want to give back, that would enjoy giving back, but they just don't know how to plug in. And, and that's another thing that I'm seeing. I think a lack of just everyday person input, whether it's on boards and commissions to cleaning up the park, being a volunteer, you know, fireman or a volunteer police person, you know, coming along, helping. We're humans. We, we like to do this stuff, you know? And we need to make space for people to help. And we need to not see them as a liability or some other kind of issue. We need to make space for these people and we need to do it in government.
I think that, that what you're saying is really very, very right on the money. Because I think that, to me, the first step away from having a community that functions and functions for everybody is demonizing those that we don't like for whatever reason. It doesn't necessarily have to be along financial lines. Again, I hate to keep on going back. And it doesn't necessarily have to be along financial lines. Again, I hate to keep on going back to politics. But I mean, you see it with, with liberals and conservatives want to demonize one another. Um, and I think that the first step away from that is just to look at people and say, well, we're just people. You're a person, I'm a person. We may have different ideas, you know, I'm a person, you're a person. You may be homeless, I may be living in a home, I may have a job, you may not. But whatever that is, if you demonize that person, you can't embrace them as a human being. Immigration reform is the same way. Immigration is a big part of that where there's a demonization of people that are not from here, not from America. And it's a problem. And, and I mean, I wish it didn't exist, but it does. So like you say, government can be a step towards helping heal those divisions, but it's got to start really in schools, in churches and in, in, in those areas where people congregate together.
Right. And, and that's where it should be being taught and, um, it, I, I don't know, you know, like today was a real wake up call for me to hear, um, these students and realize that they didn't have a voice, you know, they really didn't have a voice. And, um, I always felt like, I, I, I actually told a story that was when I was in sixth grade. This is a true story. And I was somewhat of a rebel. My dad taught us to be activists. He helped the olive pickers that came through Corning, spoke Spanish. And so he would interpret at the hospital and in the fire department and wherever there was police department. And, um, this one kid in our class, Daniel, had long hair. And this was in a time when, you know, long hair was not okay. And our sixth grade teacher was very strict. And this is in corporal punishment was still in existence, okay? And, um, he, uh, told Danny that if he didn't cut his hair, he would be cutting it for him. So he came into class and his hair was in a braid and he had his bandana on. And he came up behind Danny and he cut his, his hair off.
Wow.
And, um, we were all just like, I can't believe that just happened. So when we, when the bell rang, we all went out on the playground and I organized a sit out. I didn't even know what it was called, but I just knew we were just not going to go back into school. And we were going to protest this teacher's action. So we all, you know, lined up and when the bell rang, you know, we didn't go in. And we said, we're standing behind Danny because he, he shouldn't have had his haircut and that wasn't okay. And, um, so Danny's now a 56 year old man who just got in touch with me on Facebook and related that story that I had kind of forgotten about. He said, I will never forget that day. Because he felt like he had a friend, somebody stood up for him and everybody got behind him. And it was the power of that that changed, didn't change Mr. Bauer, whoops, I said his name. Anyway, didn't change him.
Sure.
But it changed all the students, changed, and it, and it really changed Danny.
It changed you.
And it changed me. Sure. I mean, you know, I was on my way going, wow, this is cool. We can get out of class and make a statement and, you know, it was fun. It was fun and it was, it was scary. And I did get a SWAT for it. And, um, you know, I took the SWAT for it, but it was, uh, one of those things.
That sense you got to stand up for someone and to speak truth to power. I mean, is it something that comes from your genes or is something that comes from experiences up to them? Do you think it's a little of both?
I think it's a little of both. You know, like I said, my dad is Native American Hispanic, spoke Spanish. My grandparents didn't speak English. We grew up in a very small town that, um, you know, a northern California town where I never heard people call my dad Frank. It was always Paco and Taco and, you know, um, and he was always standing up for people. And I learned that, you know, I learned and he, he taught us that. There's somebody that can't do something, you, you stand up for them. And, uh, he was on the, uh, Teachers Association Board at a time when girls' sports, you know, the girls didn't get all the things the guys did. We had to practice in the morning at six in the morning or five in the morning and we didn't even have uniforms. We had just regular PE shirts. And he fought to get, make sure we had uniforms, that the girls had uniforms and that we were treated like the boys. So I think it comes from that. And then, you know, and my dad's name was Frank. And when, at his retirement thing, I remember they said, Frank, you're just too Frank.
Well, it sounds like a good legacy, definitely. All right. Well, Deborah, where can people go to find out more about, about your campaign and, and your, and your, your program? What you, you plan to do as county supervisor?
Um, well, they can go online at deboraleucero.us and Deborah is D E B R A and L U C E R O dot U S. And I also have a Facebook page, Vote Deborah Lucero and Twitter, Vote Deborah Lucero. And, and there's some billboards going up.
I've seen those, yes.
Have you?
I have, yes.
Deborah got a big endorsement last week from the California Nurses Association. Not, not an easy endorsement to get by any means, so the, some working people come out for her and, uh, if you're, if you're out there locally and you want to turn off the national scene, there's no better way you can work locally, politics is local, than on a county supervisor and controlling, you know, uh, uh, who, who determines your budget and has your vote there. And, and for sure, uh, Deborah's in a heavyweight match. This is one of the ones, elections to watch. That's why we wanted to have you on. It's one of the, one of the races to watch this, this.
And we should say, we should make it very clear, June 5th is an important day. I mean, June 5th is not just, I mean, it is a primary, but I mean, June 5th is pretty much the decision day in your race.
Yes. And it'll be Larry or I, and Larry's, you know, 20 year politician. He's been, he's an incumbent. He, he has been in, uh, he and, uh, his crew started the Tea Party, you know, whatever here. I, I mean, they've been in power for 20 years. And I think this year is a year where we're looking for something new and different and creative. And if we don't start getting creative in our institutions, we are not going to have our institutions to worry about because they are, they're breaking down. And, um, some people say, yeah, good, great. Institutions are hard to bring back. And we need some foundations in our country. And I think our, our education foundation is huge. You know, I think that our government foundation, like working in nonprofits all these years for 20 years, we work alongside government. And we need the stability of government to be able to do what we do. You know, we can apply our passion and our knowledge and our skill, but we need that stability of government.
And you know, you get the government you vote for, right, Aaron? I mean, you'd agree with that. I mean, I think that you need to, you need to get out there and you need to vote.
Or don't vote for, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, and, and if you don't vote, you really can't say that you're unhappy with the government that you have.
Please don't.
Please.
It's true. We need, we need, we need everybody to come out and vote. It's so important to vote.
Voting down ballot. I mean, this is a, this is a non-presidential election year. So the numbers will be, this is usually a year that the, the older voters, the more consistent voters vote. Um, so it usually swings, you know, uh, to that more conservative, uh, older order group, so, um.
Although we got a lot of really cool older people that I'm counting on, so, you know.
Are you doing the nursing home tour now?
I will, if that will, if that's what it takes, man, I'll be out there.
I love it.
Be out there.
All right. Well, Deborah Lucero, thanks again for joining us today. We'll have you back again. We have a few months before June 5th, so, June 5th, yes.
Yes, June 5th.
Great. All right. Thanks again, Deborah Lucero for joining us. Uh, and don't forget all you out there in NorCal News Now, uh, sorry, Aaron, didn't want to step on the other buddy. Uh, NorCal News Now is available wherever you download your podcasts. So check us out and subscribe. We can also be found on Facebook at NorCal News Now, where you can post your comments and suggestions for upcoming podcast topics and guests. So thanks all of you for listening in. We'll be back at you soon with another big episode of NorCal News Now. So long.